Let me find out.
It looks like he's outside.
Either of you have one of these? Do you recognize this? It's from Gladys Carr. And I had lunch with the mayor and I got ahold of my end of the bargain.
I'll take one.
And provide each of you one of these.
I think I might have seen it before. I wonder if we need to put the owl up.
This would be great to incorporate this, I don't know, to better sustain state. This would be great to incorporate at the new year's.
Technical difficulties here, we're just going to modify something, so hang with us while we get our friendly owl cameras in place.
Do you need some help, Matt?
Right now, the other two commissioners can't see us. So, it would be, it would be in the actual LBC text.
Yeah, that sounds good.
You could find it on.
From the.
The zoning map won't show that property, but you want to look more, do you want to look at the future land use map?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but she's got actually right there.
Yeah, right, okay. I should have brought.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Pedro, you can hear me, right?
Yes, I can.
Because I see on YouTube they have us on the screen, but.
Okay, Pedro, you can hear me, right?
Yes, I can hear you.
Because if you're on YouTube, they have us on screen, but. I can hear you, right?
Yes, I can hear you.
Because if you're on YouTube, they have us on screen, but.
We've got to make some last minute corrective actions on the video. Can we see us now? Have you headed up? It's delayed.
Interesting.
Not yet. They're, they're kind of in a holding pattern with a lot of their quote "normal" legislation. They were dealing with that. They had census stuff and they got all that kind of worked out.
As I say, we'll get your stuff in mid-August.
Yeah.
See, we're 20,000.
Right, you're on the precipice anyway. I think you've fallen over. I think you're over 20,000.
I think so too, for sure.
It's amazing what has happened in the last year and a half, coming down 60. Because I, you know, well, I came over one time, I guess last summer, when you and the mayor were in the conference room at Town Hall. And I'm not sure I've been back. Since then. So I was just ecstatic at how everything is blossoming. Well, on the big projects, whose names I recognize, but didn't see anything until now. You can see the product. It's kind of, you see, and then there's a lot of new excavations. Development going on, it's incredible. It's a boom. Look at here, boom. That's all, yes, so exploded and it's now reached the point where it's reached the level of, we're not in my backyard. I didn't move here to have anybody live here, but I don't think the people, yeah, and I don't want anybody to be behind me developing their problems.
Just last minute, they can't see us. Hey, Matt? If they can't see us, I mean, Hilton's watching this right now. You can see it on YouTube, but there's be a significant delay. Let them still work on it. They're still working on it, guys.
TP in the NFL games, first one on high definition. There was a good second and a half between action on the field and in essence. Calls a lot of. You don't think a second and a half did much, and it's not, but when you see the play action going on and then you don't hear any commentary for at least a second and a half afterwards. It's weird. Or a basketball game where they've already scored and in the second half later, and it's a score.
Right.
In the meantime, halfway back up the court to the other end.
You can see the audience now.
Can you see us?
Test, test, test.
The owl, the owl vibe voice.
Okay, now we can see the screen.
Can you see us? Pedro, wait, okay. Can you hear us?
Oh, talk into the mic.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Would we need to move the owl closer?
Go away. Is that better?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, Pedro, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Is it loud enough?
It's loud enough.
Test, test, test.
Thank goodness for IT, guys. They are quick.
Logic is an awesome thing.
All right, Pedro, Tracy, you can hear us and see us?
Yes.
Okay, great. It's on. All right, we're ready to go.
All right, so, good evening. I just wanted to go over a couple logistics with regards to this meeting. For those staff and those giving public comments tonight, we just ask that you come up to the podium for your statements and presentations. With regards to how the board members are going to interact during the meeting, board members attending through Zoom, please keep your cameras on and mute yourselves when you are not talking. Please text me if you experience any technical difficulties. The mayor will be calling on each of you individually to provide your comments and votes. When voting, please remember to identify yourselves by stating your name and your vote. If you would like to speak at any point during the meeting, please raise your hand or speak up. So next, we just need to call the roll call. If, please indicate if you are present. Mayor Ronald Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brenda McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Jason Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Ann Simpson.
Ann Simpson, present.
Commissioner Tracy Westlick.
Tracy Westlick, present.
Commissioner Pedro Moray.
Pedro Moray, present.
All right, all members are present. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you, Melody, appreciate that. So everyone, welcome to this meeting of the Board of Commissioners, regular meeting, July 27th. This is, as you can see, a hybrid meeting. We have a couple of our commissioners that are doing remote, and then we are here today. So we're going to run it like a hybrid meeting because of the logistics of the microphones and the recordings and all that. So you'll hear us do things that you'd think that were talking to somebody else, but we're actually addressing it for the, the video. So, all right, so if, if you could all stand with me, we're going to then pledge the, do the pledge of allegiance. There's no flag tonight, so we got this one here. All right, ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you can, please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. All right, thank you, everybody. You may be seated. All right, looks like we're still good. All right. I heard a comment, no? All right, so we'll move down to item number C, the adoption of tonight's agenda, or any changes requested to tonight's agenda? Behind me there. Okay, seeing that there are no changes requested to the agenda, may I have a motion, please, for tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Very good. I'm going to have to do the roll call on this. We're still treating this as a virtual. So I will go, we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda. I'm going to go with Mayor Pro Tem.
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Go to Commissioner Simpson.
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Commissioner Westlick.
Commissioner Westlick, aye.
Commissioner Moray.
Commissioner Moray, aye.
Very good. We are adopted on tonight's agenda. So we'll move down to the next item, is general public comments, which there are no general public comments tonight. So we'll move down to the consent agenda. Can we get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Very good. We're going to have to do roll call again, so I'm going to move over to Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Commissioner Westlick.
Commissioner Westlick, aye.
Commissioner Moray.
Commissioner Moray, aye.
And back to the Mayor Pro Tem.
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Very good, thank you. Consent agenda is approved. We're going to drop down to recognitions tonight. Rosemary, I think you're up first. We have some new people to introduce.
Good evening. Is this on?
Probably not.
It, it is.
Is it? Okay.
It's got a red, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
There you go.
Good evening. I'm very excited today to present our newest staff member in the finance department. Her name is Robin Vire. Robin has experience in the nonprofit world of accounting, where she served as a director, a co-director, a board member, and a fundraiser. So she has got a wide variety of accounting experience through that. And she's also been an employee for the Union County Schools, so she has government accounting experience. So I'd like Robin to let, speak and say a few things to you, but she's been here for seven days, seven big days, and she is rocking this. All her experience from nonprofit and government experience is really pulling everything together, and she's just getting used to our software systems and, and everything here at the town. So this is Ms. Robin.
Robin, welcome.
Hello, thank you so much for this, and I'm really excited to be working for the town of Waxahau. I've actually lived in Waxahau for about 11 years, and I moved into the town in the fall. So I'm actually a resident of the town, so now I get to work and live in a town that I love, so I'm very excited to be here. So thank you guys for having me today.
Outstanding. We're excited to have you here, and thanks for your support. And I know you and I were talking the other day about how many luncheons we've had together. Six days, three luncheon.
I went, I came from Union County, like, public schools, I worked in a high school, and I didn't actually ever take lunch and get lunch, and the fact that I've had a couple lunches already, I'm like, whoa, what's happening? So it's been very nice, and it's been great to get to know people that way, so I've enjoyed it, so thank you.
Very good.
Welcome.
Welcome to the team. All right, next up, we've got our Assistant Town Manager, Town Engineer, Matt Hubert, introducing a new person for him.
Good evening, Board. Very pleased to announce the addition of a new administrative assistant to the engineering department. Linda Farnham comes from us, to us from Connecticut, a longtime asset in their local schools district. And she moved down here to be with her, her parents in Fort Lawn. And the school system was very sorry to see her go, but I'm very happy to have her. And she's seen my office, and she keeps coming in every day, so that's, that's a really good sign. Linda, if you would stand up.
Brave soul. Very good.
Thank you.
All right. You're also welcome to come up if you want to. That was a nod.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. I'm very excited to be here. The people at Waxahau are unbelievably kind. And the outreach and just the support from day one, very impressive. I, I love this town. My kids and I used to come, go to the coffee shop and walk the sidewalks, used to. We've only been here since October. But anyway, I absolutely love the town, so I'm thrilled to be here.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team again. All right, so we're building the team as we go, and that's a great thing. Thank you for being here. All right, so we have Jeffrey, you're up for recognition for one of our own. I'll let you lead on.
Thank you, Mayor. I am honored and privileged to recognize our Human Resources Director, Wendy Davenport, for her 15 years of service to the town of Waxahau. So she is one of the elder stateswomen of the, of the town and staff, one of the few that have been around for that length of time. She's been with the town since 2006. She established the first HR department in Waxahau in 2007. She's also been very big on encouraging professional development. She's also taken a lead on that herself, completing the city and county admin course that's offered by the School of Government, as well as the Public Executive Leadership Academy. She's also a Leading for Results Fellow. She's also a Certified Senior Professional in HR. She created the town's first employee newsletter, created the town's first internet, the first internal communication platform, created the employment ceremony and recognition luncheon, and implemented, apparently this is a good trivia question, but implemented the first website and social media for the town. And when you hear the term Team Waxahau, a lot of that is because of Wendy. She's really, really a true asset to the town, and we're very delighted that she's been tolerating this place for 15, 15 years of dedicated service to the town.
I'm not talking to Wendy, I'm going to embarrass you to come on up.
There have been very few moments when I've had to talk, right? I'm very grateful to be here, and it's been my pleasure to work for Waxahau.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you've done for us, and if, if the walls in your office could talk, I mean, you've seen lots of change. So appreciate what you do for us. I know there's a lot of things that are happening on the fly here. us. I know there's a lot of things that are happening on the fly here during the COVID stuff, and so appreciate you just jumping in. So, thank you for being here. All right, we'll move down to presentations tonight. There are zero, and now we're gonna move to public hearing, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Very good. We'll do the roll call again. So, go to Commissioner Simpson.
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Commissioner Westlick?
Commissioner Westlick, aye.
Commissioner Moray?
Commissioner Moray, aye.
And back to the Mayor Pro Tem.
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Very good. We are open. First up, Lisa Thompson. So, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'll wait for the PowerPoint.
We're missing our screen over there, so.
All right. Before you tonight is a request by the Town of Waxahaw for a general town rezoning map amendment from R-40 Union County Residential to NC Neighborhood Center. The two properties are located at 2410 and 2412 South Providence Road. The subject property is highlighted in blue. It's located on the west side of Providence Road. This is north of Gray Bribrum, south of Bonds Grove Church Road. Currently has an existing single-family home located on the site with an existing zoning of R-40 in Union County. On the screen is the existing zoning map. To the north is Park Providence Subdivision, which is R-3. To the east is Providence Grove subdivision, which is R-3. To the south, in brown, is our Neighborhood Center. This is that Southern Boutique store. And then in purple is our Employment Center. Also, to the west, there's a single-family, thank you, there's a single-family home, and then beyond that is the Barrington subdivision, which is also R-3. The property was annexed in July, so per state statute, the town is required to zone the property within 60 days. To zone the property, we need to look at our future land use map. As you recall, the town just went through a large initiative to update that land use plan map with the goals of job creation, build and diversify the tax base, diversify housing stock, and economic development. The future land use map designates, designates the subject property as mixed use. Mixed use is targeted for a mixture of retail, office, and medium-density residential housing choices that is walkable and convenient to neighborhoods. It should be placed in strategic locations that can function harmoniously with the surrounding residential areas. The zoning district that correlates with the land use map is Neighborhood Center. On the presentation slide is what the zoning map would look, would look like if this were approved. NC zoning would serve as a good transition between the Employment Center in purple, which is just south of this property, which is your larger-scale businesses and industries, and it's a good transition to the R-3 residential to the north. Neighborhood Center zoning allows for smaller-scale offices, neighborhood-oriented retail and services, and a mixture of housing types. In your packet, I've included a summary sheet of dimensional standards, your primary uses, and then the relevant code section and notes sheets from the LDC. The Planning Board met July 19th, and by a vote four to two, recommended against the NC zoning. Those that voted in opposition recommended R-1. As you know, with all rezonings, we are required to make a statement of land use plan consistency and describe whether the request is reasonable and/or unreasonable with the plan. The Planning Board offered the following statement: "The request is inconsistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan and the 21 future land use map. It is unreasonable and not of the public interest due to the increased utility demand on water, sewer, and roadways, and the negative effect on adjacent properties values. The Board believes further engineering is needed and that there's been no effort for transparency with adjacent properties." Staff does recommend approval of the general rezoning. Tonight is just the public hearing only, so at the August meeting, we'll be looking for two votes. Land use plan consistency statement, which is written in your packet, that's been provided by staff. This can be adopted or modified, and as needed, per the Board's discussion tonight and at the next meeting, and given Planning Board's recommendation. And then we'll need a motion to approve or deny the zoning itself. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we'll open it up to the Commissioners to make comment, discussion. Commissioner Simpson.
Lisa, could you just tell me, I've gotten a few comments from citizens. Could you just explain to me what the notification process is? Because a lot of people said that they weren't notified of this process, of the process of the zoning request. Is there any way that you could just explain what that is, and what's been done so far?
Sure. We are required to place an ad in a local newspaper. We have to run it for two consecutive weeks, which has been done. We all, we were also required to send a notice to the adjacent property owners. That was sent along with a notice to the HOA management companies of Park, Grove, Park Grove, and Park Providence subdivisions, and then we had to place a, a sign on the property. This all had to be done with it between 10 and 25 days of tonight's public hearing.
So, is it possible that before those public notices go out, that the Planning Board could meet before citizens are aware of it?
Yeah, there's no public comment during the Planning Board meeting. They're our, kind of our work group. So, tip, it's typical that they didn't get the notice until maybe the day of or after that Planning Board meeting.
Right. And you said, so you said that it's usually 10 to 25 days before our public hearing tonight?
Board of Commissioners' public hearing, yep.
And that's by state statute?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other comments? Commissioner Hall? And I can't see the other two now. Commissioner Westlick or Commissioner Moray? There you are.
There was a, a sign placed also at the property, correct, notifying there was zoning hearing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are we still on?
Did she get an answer?
Did you, Tracy, did you get your answer?
Yes, I did. And did we, were there any public comments from any of those adjoining neighbors? Have we heard that up until this point?
I have not received any. I believe one came in to the system today, which Melody will read this evening.
Any other comments by the Board members? Commissioner Moray?
Just up.
Mayor Pro Tem?
No.
Okay, just one comment or clarification. So, this is not necessarily a rezoning. This is placing the initial zoning.
Correct.
On the property. So.
Yes, sir.
If we want to be technical, it's state requirement for municipality. Once a property is annexed in, we have to apply zoning.
Correct.
And I saw on there, it was mentioned, we're referring to a 2016 plan, which is null and void. Now.
Yep. So, we have the, the 2016 comp plan, but we have a 2021 map.
Right.
So, we'll use the golden objectives from that comp plan, but for the, for the rezoning, we'll, we'll use that land use plan map.
Okay, and the Planning Board has previously approved the LDC, which identifies this area to be zoned this way.
Yes, sir.
Correct? And do you remember, they just did that recently, correct?
The map was approved in March.
March 2021, they approved the, well, they recommended approval to this Board who approved it in March, the, the LDC, which is the written text, as well as the zoning map and the future land use map.
So, this request here on this petition is in concert with the LDC and the recommendations and approvals by this Board?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay. All right. Any other discussion from Board members? I'm sorry, I have to put my back to you to ask one more question. Anything else? Okay, at this time, I'm going to have the people who have signed up. There's two people that have signed up on the project, and we have one that wants to have a duplication, have it read into the record. Okay, we're gonna start with Mr. Miles. You're in the audience, there you are. If you would please come up to the podium, and you can make your statement. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for having me. How good. Hi, everybody. Miles Spats here. I live in Providence Grove. Been here in January, will be eight years. So, I've seen at least my bit of the town changing. Some for the good, I think, some not so good with traffic patterns and what, you know, what land is used for what. I don't necessarily agree with all of it, and this particular piece came to my attention and some of the members in our, our group, in our HOA, because we're just noticing an increased traffic pattern. It's more difficult to turn left, to go south or north from where we are. And so, we just kind of wanted to make sure our voice was heard as to, you know, the, the choices that are remade for this property, which is directly across from us, and will have an effect on that. So, I, I would say my first kind of comment is, I, I know there's, you know, requirements for notification of what this is going to be rezoned for, but I, I would argue that those are extremely ineffective, given there's been not a single comment till right now on what that will be zoned for now that it's been annexed into the town. And so, at the meeting you had last Monday, I just find it hard to believe that not a single person in the adjacent property or the town had, had any input. So, I would say that the, that, that the notifications are, are not reaching the people that, that they're intended to be, you know, so they can understand what's going on. I strongly think it should be left or, or changed into, as to R-1, err on the side of caution, and then if, you know, it's approved, to change it to another type of, another type of use, that would be a better idea, rather than starting with the mixed use and then having to work your way back into a single family if that's what, you know, the, the best decision would be. As far as traffic goes, I mean, it's bad enough now on Providence Road. If you add a mixed use or multifamily use in that spot, those families, generally speaking, I would say are gonna have to go north, most likely to Charlotte, where they were working, because there's, that's usually where people are driving up to go in the morning. And it's, it's just that much more difficult trying to get out of that, what would be a new development, creating more accidents, and, you know, it's generally, you know, making it not safe on the roads there. I don't know what the property value effect would be on having commercial use behind the homes there in Park Providence. I don't live there, but I, I don't think it would be tremendous, you know, tremendous improvement. I can't imagine people there being happy having commercial traffic coming in out of their house, or, you know, a, a large number of people in such a small space living behind their house. I, I don't know if it's possible. I would suggest, you know, we need more parks in the town. I know there, there's plans to build the park down here out, but at least for us, that, you know, to have something a little more useful there, rather than a commer, you know, commercial or a small business, would be better served for the town, that, that the community could use, rather than just a small business to generate, you know, probably not, not too tremendous of tax revenue. That's really all I had. Just want to let you guys know what I thought, and I appreciate your time.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, next up, you want to read the statement additions, since we're trending that right now?
Absolutely.
And Mr. Miles has originally put in a statement. And so, we're gonna, we're gonna read your statement, if that's okay.
Absolutely. So, the comment is from Miles Spats. This comment is to express my concern over the choice, speed, and manner in which this rezoning is taking place. I've seen little to no public notice to the proposed changes, and even reading the minutes from the planning meeting held 7/19/21, it appears there were no public comments, and neighborhood residents whom would be greatly affected were not made aware. The capacity of the roads at the entrance of the proposed rezoning is extremely busy. It's difficult to turn in either direction on Providence Road, and a high-density commercial area would make that worse. Sewers are also at capacity as well. There needs to be more green space in the northern part of Waxahaw, and this would be a great place for a park. Adding commercial properties in this highly residential area would be an eyesore, and top it off with apartments would just make capacity that much worse. I'm against any rezoning that allows for commercial use of any kind or high-density living. I support make, support making the annexed, annexed property a low-density, single-family home area. End of comment.
Very good. And again, is in concert with what he was saying first. We just decided to read it into the record this way?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you for that. Looks like I have Mr. Jim Leinberger up and wanting to speak. Floor is yours if you'd like it, sir. If you just state your name and the record, and then your address, if you would.
My name is Jim Leinberger. Currently live at 3238 Park Road. I would like to thank the Mayor and the Commissioners for giving time to speak. I have been a resident and a property owner in Waxahaw for over 22 years, and native to the Charlotte area. I moved to Waxahaw, the reason I moved to Waxahaw was a small-town feel, that where they proudly posted on Town Hall door, "Welcome to Waxahaw, come on in." I've raised both of my kids off a ski trail lane, and I've always loved Waxahaw, and that's why I, this is my hometown. I've seen a lot of growth in 22 years. Many I agree with, some I haven't. In my opinion, it took courage for the Mayor, the Commissioners, the Town Manager, the Planning Staff, and the Planning Board to roll up their sleeves over two years ago and start working on a new comprehensive land pan, plan, and new LDC to reshape the direction of Waxahaw. The huge undertaking with all the discussions, input, countless hours, reading, revising drafts, answering all the residents' questions, it was finally completed and voted on in March, I believe, of this year. In my opinion, I believe it was a huge accomplishment for Waxahaw and for the better vision of tomorrow. The Planning Staff has been exceptional to work with, and I appreciate their professionalism throughout this process. I've also agree with the Planning Staff's recommendation, and I believe it is consistent with their overall vision of Waxahaw. I reviewed the minutes of the Planning Board on February 15th earlier this year that you spoke about, and the Board did unanimously have favorable recommendations, passing seven yeses, zero nos, on the new land development code, the updated future land use plan, and the zoning map to the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Nash, currently on the Planning Board, made a motion for the reasonableness and consistency statement that said the town revised growth strategy is consistent with the comprehensive plan for the future planning goals of Town of Waxahaw. It is reasonable and in the public interest as the town has updated its zoning ordinance, land use development code, or land development code, and replaced the unified development ordinance. It also talks about the updated future land use plan, which depicts the town's growth and strategy as determined by a comprehensive planning process in which everyone on this Board, I believe, approved, and the Planning Board. The consistency statement was unanimously approved as well from the current Planning Board, at seven yeses, zero nos. Park Providence, oh, excuse me, in this updated and approved future land use map that was previously approved, or that is approved, is property slated, this property is slated for Neighborhood Center zoning, and what I feel is an excellent choice from a transitional zoning perspective. a transitional zoning perspective. Park Providence, north, as Lisa explained, is R4, I think, four houses per acre. And the property, south, is slated for employment center, which is commercial with multifamily. Now, I think somebody's misstated and said that we could put apartments in neighborhoods centers on it. I wanted to correct that. You cannot, I don't believe you can put apartments. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff. So I think that from a transitional standpoint, going from R4 to a commercial zoning with a neighborhood center that sort of meets in the middle, I think it was a good choice that the town had made, and spent a lot of time and effort in approving. If this board agrees to approve the neighborhood zoning, I look forward to working with the town and its vision for this property. I want to be a good neighbor to all the surrounding properties, while envisioning a place where small businesses can grow and thrive while being close to where they live. In closing, I'd appreciate your consideration for the zoning of Neighborhood Center. As I feel it depicts the town's growth strategy in its updated future land use map, I look forward to working with the town, and excited about the vision that the town has for this property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have one statement to read.
Very good.
So the window for public comments missions will close 24 hours after this public hearing concludes tonight. All comments received within this period will be forwarded to the board and incorporated into the public record.
Because we're still hybrid.
Yes.
Right melody.
Yes, sir.
That section of the former statute that says 24 hours after the public hearing, that was repealed, is now 24 hours prior to the public hearing.
So we're good.
For the public comment. So public comment is closed now.
Thank you.
We all learned during COVID. So, very good. Thank you, Charlie, for that. Okay, very good. All right, so on this item, we will end of discussion on this, so we will make a move to close the public hearing on this item. So I have a motion.
Mayor, how was this, Commissioner Westlick, I have one question, please?
Very good. Go ahead.
This could either be for Lisa or Matt, if he's there. Just listening to some of the comments, can one of them address any traffic mitigation or road improvements that would occur at this property for this type of zoning?
Matt's going to come up to address that, Tracy?
Yes, ma'am. So whatever development is proposed here would still have to get approval. It would have to be in accordance with our TIA, our transportation impact analysis, and DOT would also have to approve the driveway permit before they can make a new connection. And so really, this is, it's too early for us to be able to do any real due diligence on it, but the widening of Providence Road is still planned. It's on hold right now in terms of design, and they're in right-of-way right now, but that will ultimately be improved with additional lanes in both directions, and then there won't be full access likely at this, at this driveway.
Does that answer your question? Very good. Thank you, Matt. We generally don't take comments back and forth. It's just the public statement kind of time. All right, so, we're good? All right, very good. So we'll go back. A motion to close this portion of the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, motion is up. We'll have to do the roll call again. I'll go to Commissioner Westlick.
Commissioner Westlick, aye.
Commissioner Morey?
Commissioner Morey, aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Mayor Portem?
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Very good. Thank you. That closes the public hearing on this particular item. We move down to the next one. We'll open up another public hearing. So much fun. All right, so I have a motion. This is a text amendment petition, TA 0126102021. So if I could have a motion to open up the public hearing on this one?
So moved.
All right, motion is up for opening up this public hearing. I'm going to start back with Commissioner Westlick.
Commissioner Westlick, aye.
Commissioner Morey?
Commissioner Morey, aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Mayor Portem?
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
All right, we're open. We got Lisa, our Planning and Inspections Director, back up, so floor is yours again.
Thank you. I'll wait for the PowerPoint again.
And by the way, our, our team, our IT team, is doing a fantastic job of keeping this rolling tonight. So I know you guys are back on the wall over there. You can knock on the wall, but we appreciate you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. It is the recommendation of the staff and OAB to combine the planning board and Board of Adjustment, and give the duties of the Board of Adjustment to the planning board. Combining the boards saves times and time and resources. We had this in Weddington, where I worked in the past, and if we had a Board of Adjustment case, they would call for the special meeting prior to the, the planning board evening, a planning board meeting that was already scheduled. With the new uniform LDC, it's logical for the planning board to do both functions, and the Board of Adjustment has only met a handful of times over the past few years. So the additional cases shouldn't be a burden on the board. Within your packet, you'll see the suggested changes in bold, and they are listed here tonight. At the August 10th meeting, staff will request that the board remove the composition sections for planning board, HPC, and the BOA from the Waxahaw Code of Ordnances. This action abolishes the boards by ordinance, and then we'll have to reestablish the boards, which we're going through this process tonight. Also at that meeting, we'll reappoint the sitting members of the planning board. The planning board met on July 19th to consider the text amendment. They unanimously recommended approval. At your August meeting, we'll be looking for two votes. The first is the land use plan consistency statement. This statement must describe how the zoning text proposed is consistent or inconsistent, and explain why the proposed action is reasonable and in the public interest. Staff has provided a draft statement that can be adopted or modified per your discussion this evening. And then we'll make the decision on the text itself. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions up behind me on the screen? I can't see you guys again, so I'm going to listen for you. Any comments, thoughts, Commissioner Westlick or Commissioner Morey?
Commissioner Morey, I just have a question just so I can ask. So we're looking to combine for planning board and Board of Adjustment. Wouldn't it be better to have both of them separate, because it's another check and balance, as opposed to saying board members basically reaffirm or deny their own opinions or approval?
I can't think of any cases. Board of Adjustment has variance cases and appeals of staff's decisions. I can't think of any case where a planning board decision would need a Board of Adjustment decision.
Okay, well, I, I, I started at the Board of Adjustment, and even if we have so far had it, it still could help. I think part of the reason why we have two separate boards was to ensure that there was another set of years, more unbiased, or something more online, so, I don't know, it's kind of having a two-person integrity or three-person integrity, just to have check and balance available to keep watching it as a town.
Let the town manager weigh in a little bit on that, maybe Charlie, too.
Mr. Morey, it is pretty common to have both of those boards combined. You certainly have many municipalities that do have them separate, but there are quite a number of them where they are combined. A lot of times, they are because of the number of cases, which is generally very, very rare. And as Ms. Thompson said, it would be, I think, a very rare occurrence where there would be some type of decision that would come up through the, from the Board of Adjustment that would follow up a planning board decision. The Board of Adjustment typically deals with administrative appeals, which a lot of times are code enforcement-type issues, variance cases, which are typically related to dimensional requirements for a specific use, something like that. It's usually not the more global land use, because you can't vary from a land use, which is typically where the planning board recommendation on the decision-making lies. So that is the difference. And as I mentioned, the dearth of the meetings and having an advisory board, that's a tough, tough meeting to just have a meeting. There's just not enough to do for that if they're not meeting regularly. So that was one of the thought processes. And so I've been here for two years, and the only Board of Adjustment meeting that I can remember that we had was the one or two that we had where we went over the land development code. We have not had a single variance case or a single administrative appeal. Guess that could certainly potentially change tomorrow, but I mean, in my history, I guess, of doing this local government work, this size of town, I would, the average of that is maybe one or two a year, if that. So we feel that is a better utilization of resources. The way it would work is you would have the, the planning board members, they would have their, their normal meeting. They could, if they do have a variance case, or whatever the case is that comes up, they can adjourn their planning board meeting, and then they can reconvene just a few minutes later as the Board of Adjustment and conduct business, business that way.
And they also can have the alternates play separate roles. Remember that? So Charlie, if you'd like to speak to that for just a brief moment about the alternates roles in this potential?
Well, you have to have five members of the Board of Adjustment vote to approve something. Five out of, well, four out of five. You need two alternates, so, because you have so many volunteers, and then when there is a Board of Adjustment meeting, getting at least five members in attendance is usually pretty hard. So you do need those two alternates so that you always have an opportunity to have five members meeting, even though it's a five-member board, two alternates. But let me echo what Jeff said, that when you only have one or two meetings a year as a Board of Adjustment, when you ask citizens to volunteer, and then you never give them any work, then there's no incentive for them to even show up for a meeting, and you, a lot of times, you would run into the, the fact that you finally have a meeting, and you can't even get five people there because they're just not used to coming, that they don't have assignments, and they become discouraged. And so one way to alleviate that is to have a sitting planning board, which the statutes allow, and which a lot of municipalities, as Lisa and Jeff both have pointed out, have combined those functions with the planning board, because they meet regularly, and you get volunteers wanting to serve on that planning board. It's harder on the Board of Adjustment when you don't ever give them any work. So I think that it's a twofold thing, a lack of Board of Adjustment activity, and also on the alternates, you need those alternates in order to have at least five members at a, because, see, that's a quasi-judicial hearing when they sit as a planning board. I mean, as a Board of Adjustment. And so that's a totally different function, and it would be a separate meeting, either on the same night or on an alternate night. But still, their vision then becomes, as a judge, when you sit as a quasi-judicial, and so you take evidence. And so it just will work functionality-wise, in particular for a town this size, to have that as a combined effort of the same people on, as the planning board.
Okay. Thank you for that. And we all have been working on this, debating this for the last few months. And I think this is a conclusion after going through several discussions and having our legal counsel give us direction on it as well. Commissioner Morey, does that answer your question any further?
I just mentioned that it's been discussed, and it's one of the first I've heard about at my, I still feel that we should probably have it, including people who want to show up for planning boards, and sure, we find people that want to show up for Board of Adjustment. I think we see the people who are more involved in the communities, and I think that they should be allowed to sit on some of these boards. And Board of Adjustment also is one of the boards that we should stack, we should, that's just my.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments by the commissioners? Lisa, any follow-up on anything? All right, very good. All right, thank you all. Appreciate the comments back and forth on this. So at this point, we're going to look at a motion to close this public hearing, or?
We just need to do the public comments, which there were none received.
There were none, right. That's, I saw that. Nothing at all. Okay. All right, thanks for that reminder. On it, nothing. All right, we will then take a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Very good. We have a motion up to close the public hearing, and we'll start with Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Mayor Portem?
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Commissioner Westlick?
Commissioner Westlick, aye.
Commissioner Morey?
Commissioner Morey, aye.
Back to Commissioner Simpson.
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your thoughts and comments on this one. We'll move down to the old business. It looks like I have a sidewalk contract to be discussed. Matt Hubert, our Assistant Town Manager and our Town Engineer, you're up.
Thank you.
Waiting for your presentation to come up.
All right. So I'm here to bring back the update on the downtown pedestrian project. So when we last left this project formally, I presented it at the retreat. The background information then was that DOT's funds for the grant that we had were frozen for their own financial issues, and then extended during COVID. So the concept was to separate the most important portion of the project, which was the sidewalk connecting the pedestrian bridge over to the mill development, and adding a rapid flashing beacon at the crosswalk to increase pedestrian safety in that location. And we proceeded in that direction in an effort to get it sped up and not have it encumbered by the DOT issues. So we put that project out for bid separately. Bid opening was July 6th. Only one bid was received. The bid was more than double the estimate, came in at $250,000, $57,000, and the estimate is $120,000. Some of the issues identified by the bidder were that it's a very busy construction season, and CDOT required night work paving, and there was a very limited amount of paving, so keeping a plant open that late was going to be expensive. And also CSX, working in their right-of-way, requires coordination with their inspectors, and increased insurance requirements, something that the contractor really wasn't really going to give us a good value for. Those were all hits against the project in specific terms. So in order to move that forward, because it's still an important project for us, we've, we're going to become the overall general contractor, and we've broken the contract into specialty scope of work items. Our own Public Services will complete the grading, the sign relocation, the beacon installation, and restoring the site. That takes out the CSX portion of work from the contractor. All that work that's being done in the right-of-way will be done by our crews with our own insurance, and we will coordinate with the inspections. So Red Clay is the prime subcontractor, doing all the concrete, sidewalk, curb, and ramp work, as well as the paving, for a cost of $55,570. We've worked that out with DOT, where that work can be done. The paving can be done on a Saturday morning, low, low traffic volumes at that time, and we'll be sure that it doesn't interfere with any town events, whatever day that might be, likely in September. And so we still are working on separate subcontract for pavement markings, the electrical installation, and construction staking, but those are fairly incidental contract amounts. We're working with DOT on who's going to repair the guard rail. DOT's approval of a, of a more decorative handrail versus the standard that's approved. And so right now, those aren't determined, but we don't want them to hold up the project. We want to get construction underway and, and completed as soon as possible. Again, all final costs are not expected to exceed the original budget amount of, of $120,000. Recommended action is to approve or deny the contract with Red Clay in the amount of $55,570 for sidewalk curb and paving portions of the downtown pedestrian improvement project Phase A. Any questions?
Any questions? Oh, Commissioner Hall.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Matt, the only comment I have is just, I've been watching you go, go through this and just really my highest commendations for recognizing the extraordinary cost this originally came in at, and then finding a way, finding a path to do this using our, using our own resources. Just today at lunch, I was speaking with some of our residents about this project, and it's extraordinarily important. It's, it's going to be meaningful for everyone in order to connect between the bridge and, and Emmett. So well done on, on finding a path forward here.
Appreciate that. Yeah. I don't recommend anybody work with CSX. It's probably been four years just to get approval. And in the end, we really didn't get it. We had to design around most of the work.
The, the crossing beacon at the Kensington Drive and Sunset, that was just installed by Public Services. So that was just the test run to, to give us the, make sure it had assurances that we could do that work. And it's turned out beautifully.
So we'll have no more flag?
No more flag. What, what I have told staff is we're going to collect all those orange flags with all of these projects that we're doing, and then we're going to have some kind of celebration with those when everything's done.
A very different flag burning party, huh?
Yes, yes.
Auction those off.
That's right. All right. I can see on the screen, Commissioner Morey, I heard your voice.
I just said, uh, we should probably keep one for the store.
Certainly. We'll post it on a wall somewhere, right?
Right.
Exactly. Commissioner Westlick?
No questions.
Very good. Well, Matt, I got to say that I've watched this try to happen for the last four or five years here, through more than administration.
It's going to be done, regardless of what it does to me, I'm going to continue to, to stay on this one. It's, there's no doubt about it.
Kudos to you for working through it. It's, again, been promised to those business owners downtown for five years that I'm aware of.
Right.
And the workaround that you've been able to achieve, very impressive. So thank you for that. Appreciate you and, and your team doing the workaround and getting real creative. And certainly Todd's group is also going to participate in that. So we appreciate you guys, you know, taking one for the team, so to speak.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions for the presenter? All right. Seeing none on that? Thank you. Yep. But we'll need a motion after he's all done. So we're all good on this. Have a motion up?
I make a motion to approve the contract with Red Clay in the amount of $55,000, is that $55,570 for the sidewalk curb and paving for the downtown pedestrian improvement project from the bridge to the mill.
Very good. Motion's up. Everybody heard that? I take it? Okay. We'll go around for the call. We got a motion to approve, so we'll start with Commissioner Morey.
Commissioner Morey, aye.
Commissioner Westlick?
Commissioner Westlick, aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Back to Mayor Portem.
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Very good. Motion is passed. Thank you, everybody. And again, thanks to our team here to put this in, together and make it happen. Pretty proud. All right. We're going to move over to new business today. So we got the descriptor's Old Town Village petition. Madison Miller, I think you're up. Welcome back to reality here.
It's weird. I'm used to sitting behind a computer screen or sitting right behind that table there.
I know. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
What floor is yours?
Good afternoon, everybody. I am here before you to present Old Town Village, a preliminary plan for a major subdivision. Just diving right in, this is a petition request by Broad Street Homes for a buy-right preliminary subdivision plan on approximately 9.96 acres on the above listed parcel ID numbers there. The proposed subdivision will contain 63 single-family attached dwelling units and three single-family detached cottage-style dwelling units. And these will be located between North Providence Street and Washington Street, adjacent to our downtown area. And this request was submitted under the Unified Development Ordinance. So this is not under our newly adopted Land Development Code. They submitted prior to the adoption. And so, as I said, the Unified Development Ordinance is what we're putting this against. So this is a aerial map of the parcels. So you're looking at it from north to south. So north will be Blythe Mill Road. To the east will be the existing South Brook subdivision, and then the Washington Street extension there, you can see at the bottom of the stream. To the south is the edge of downtown, close to Dream Chasers. And to the west, you can kind of see there the big white blob is the BB&amp;T building. And then farther west of that will be the Ardmore Apartments. So for the UDO zoning, the subject properties are currently zoned urban neighborhood. They were previously zoned R4 and UN, but were rezoned, all of it to UN, on November 23rd, 2020, for the purpose of developing a residential neighborhood consisting of the town homes and the single-family dwelling units. Our future land use map, so in accordance with our 2016 Comprehensive Plan Policy Bridge, it designates this area as G4 Downtown Residential. So this designation applies to residential areas kind of surrounding the downtown retail core. And so the allowed uses here are a mixture of detached single-family cottages, duplex, and townhomes with permitting densities for four to 20 dwelling units per acre, of course, depending on site characteristics. So this is the overall preliminary plan. See if my pointer works. So you can see here, the main point of ingress and egress is off of North Providence Street. So the right of your screen is to the north, and the left is to the south. So it's kind of changed orientation here. And so you have stubouts to the south, to the Mill Street right-of-way. You have a grass paver connection here for emergency services, to Washington Street to the east. And you can see the individual lots there. And, and I'll go into further detail about the site characteristics in the following slides. But I'll leave it up there for a few more seconds. Moving right along. So for the transportation improvements for this property, with our traffic consultant's Kim Lee Horn, along with staff and the applicants, we have hosted a transportation tech, technical memo scoping meeting. And so this is where we look at the proposed site plan to draft trip generations, look at studies at intersections, and review available planning documents to determine the planned transportation improvements within the study area. And so that meeting has been conducted, and the background data collection has also been completed. So this is where the traffic consultant, Kim Lee Horn, will take a look at turning movements, crash data, and then they'll do site area visitation as well. And so prior, of course, to conditional, or to construction document approval, they will conduct the transportation tech memo, or they will complete it. And then staff, Kim Lee Horn, and the applicant will have to agree to the tech memo in accordance with our TIA ordinance. And so as I said, the proposed subdivision has its main point of ingress and egress along North Providence Street. And then, and then, of course, depending on those mitigations, they have other opportunities to connect and create more street connectivity. So sidewalks are also being provided throughout the whole subdivision on both sides of the street. And then the single-family attached buildings will have rear-loaded alleys. And then the driveways for the single-family homes will be your standard 20-foot driveways. Recreation space. So as I said, the overall subdivision is about 9.96 acres, and they are providing 2.3 acres of tree save area and common open space. And then one of the common open spaces will be designated as a recreation spare, square, as part of our UDO requirements. And so here is a snapshot of the planting and tree save area plan. So there are no buffer requirements in the urban neighborhood zoning district. However, along with the 2.3 acres of tree save and common open space, they are installing or, or having lots of tree save area along the buffer, or along the edges of the development, and installing buffers to the adjoining property owners. And so the buffer areas mostly will be found along the eastern or western portions of the proposed development. And so here is a rendering of the elevations for the Old Town Village subdivision. You can see a mixture of elements here. You can see in the center, a mixture of, of brick. And then the other side units will have a mixture of lap siding and board and batten. And I'll have two other elevation sheets to show you as well after this. And so the, the focus here was to kind of draw from downtown Waxahaw and the architectural elements and really pull it into this proposed subdivision. And so here is just that picture enlarged. And then recently here is a newer depiction of it, showing a different color brick and style. And so they'll have different colored elevations throughout. And then here is just an uncolored elevation sheet showing the side elevations there. So for planning staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the proposed buy-right subdivision based on the consistency with the UDO requirements, the comp plan policy bridge document, and the future land use map designation. So this is a major subdivision request, and therefore no conditions can be placed on the approval. This administration, administrative decision requires staff to apply objective standards set in the ordinance to facts and are supplied in the submittal, and the submittal meets these standards of the Unified Development Ordinance. And so at our July 19th Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board voted four to two to send a favorable recommendation to you all tonight. And so the requested action before we tonight will be for a motion to approve or deny this, to deny this position. And so before I dive into the questions, I want to take a second to go over what our UDO requires, and then also what Old Town Village is providing. And so in the UN zoning district, they allow for building heights of three stories, which is 45 feet in height. This development is proposed two stories at 20 feet to better blend in with the area and be more harmonious with adjoining property owners. So in our UDO, it allows for materials such as vinyl, and allows for stucco and ephes, up to 40% of the materials used. And this development is providing a mixture of brick, lap siding, and then board and batten. So no vinyl will be used in the product of this. The UN zoning district requires 5% recreation space, and they are providing roughly 23% of recreation space, either as common open space, recreation square, or tree save. Other than the recreation space requirement, as I alluded to, there are no tree save or buffer requirements in a UN zoning district. And they are providing 20 to 35-foot landscape areas along the edges of the development. And then the UDO major subdivision requirement does not require any neighborhood meetings. And so the applicant has taken the time to meet with North Providence Street residents, Washington Street residents, and the Price Street Extension residents. And so they have gone above and beyond the UDO requirements. And so I am available for questions, but our, the applicant is here as well, and I think they would like to come up and speak. And they have a few slides to go over as well. I will turn the floor over to Chris Hansen.
Good evening, everybody. Madison, thank you again for that, that thorough presentation on the hard work. My name is Chris Hansen. I primarily focus on the land development and site planning of the Old Town Village. Brian Ignema, who's the president of Broad Street Homes, if you live in Waxahaw, and you drive down Waxahaw Marvin Grove Manor is one of the subdivisions that, that he's recently, recently built out. Mason Grayson's with Land Design. He's the engineer at Record, kind of brands the operation. So kind of before we open up to any questions, I want to just kind of quickly expand on how this project has evolved over the last, really, year and a half that I've been working on it. Brian, I think, has been working on this probably for probably two and a half years or so. And how this project has really improved, and that, and that improvement is really based on the communication, some of the feedback and concerns that we had with, again, the North Providence residents and the Washington Street residents as well. And how it's their feedback, which is really not only driven kind of the architecture, which Brian's going to talk about, but again, some of the site planning changes as well. So, and additionally, and I've, I've mentioned this before, Brian and I, we're both residents of Waxahaw. I've been here since 96. Brian's been here 16, 17 years. I think we're locals by, you know, by Waxahaw standards at this point. So we love this town. We love living here. And we know that we've got to really produce a quality product, as we want to continue to grow and, and continue to develop in this town. So, so I've just have a, really want to just talk about some specific things that we've done from that site planning, kind of where it was and where we are now. So on the screen is just a snapshot of the, of the North Providence entrance. And kind of the original design actually had on-street parking as you, as you drove into the community. And when we met with some of the, the residents who really lived right off of North Providence, we knew right away that that was not something that obviously they would like, having parking right next to their, right next to their single-family houses. So we, what we did is we, we eliminated the on-street parking, you know, even though it had been, it had been a benefit, I think, to, you know, downtown as well as our development, and increased the landscape buffer there. So if you can go to the next slide, let me give you a quick example. Am I sure who's running the... Oh, pardon me.
Yep.
Great. So you can see what we've, what our current site plan shows is now we've incorporated 20-foot landscape buffer. That, of course, we have a nine-foot planning strip and a five-foot side, sidewalk. So we've added about 34 feet between the property lines of, of the neighbors. In fact, at one of those early meetings, Brian made a commitment to the property owners that he would bring his landscape architect and really talk direct with those homeowners to help design that entrance to best shield it as possible. So I don't think anyone would want to have necessarily a, an entrance to a neighborhood by their house. There's, I don't think anyone would sign up for that. But again, we want to do everything we can to, to shield those neighbors and, and take care of them. And that's a commitment that we made right off the bat, and, and we'll continue to, to move on with. So we also met with many of the folks who live off of Washington Street, kind of the, the back of this property. And if those of you who've ever driven down Washington Street, there's a few things you'll notice. And first of all, it's very narrow. It's a very narrow street. Some of the, the folks who've lived there, they've lived there for generations and generations. And it, and our first original plan actually had an entrance, or had a connection to that street. And we knew, and, and after talking with them, that it's just a no-go. There's plenty of kids who, who play off that street, and it just wouldn't make sense from a development standpoint, standpoint. So based on their feedback, we made a commitment, you know, prior to rezoning, that it would, we would only allow and design a, a, emergency access, kind of a, you know, green, green space access to it. And that's a commitment, again, we'll still, we continue to make. The other thing you'll see is that there's townhomes that were originally in our plan that was right up against the, the neighbors of Washington Street. And after several rounds of kind of communication, what we ended up with is, we decided, and we, we knew, again, based on the feedback, that having something that would better transition to the single-family neighborhoods would make more sense. So our current site plan now has three single-family detached properties that are kind of cottage-style, which, again, just better transition, you know, to those, to those neighbors. In addition to that, what we did is we moved our, the townhomes as close to the public street they're building as possible. And that allowed us to increase that buffer, increase the landscape buffer. So off of Summerwood, as, as well as Washington... So off of Summerwood as well as Washington, we have, you know, 35-foot plus landscape buffer as well. And as I mentioned earlier, again, these aren't, these are above and beyond the ordinance. But, you know, as residents here, we can't just come in here and just check boxes and meet the minimum standards and hey, it's a by right subdivision and just do that. So again, that was, those talks were instrumental in what we ended up with. And then, you know, and even as recent as the last couple of weeks, there were some of the, we were Lisa with the staff that, hey, there's some concerns about this kind of corner, this common open space that was originally landscape buffer. There's a lot of, there's a lot of trees there. And it was a quest to just make that tree save and common open space. And we didn't hesitate at all. That was a request that we made and we went ahead and put it in there. So so again, those are just, I think, a few examples of of how this project in this community has changed. I think for the better. What we have now is substantially better than it was was earlier. Commissioner McMillan, you were instrumental in helping us connect with those residents and neighbors. So I really appreciate that. And I think this is a good example of working with, you know, residents and neighbors early and often, we just end up with a, you know, better, better development. So with that, to kind of talk about some of the fun stuff, Brian, if you want to come up here and kind of talk about architecture and the actual building itself, so.
Thank you, Chris and Madison. With myself, Matt, I'm going to be as repetitive as possible. I'll be brief. Brian Ignama resides at 9705 Agile Circle in Waxall. First hats off to the staff and and council and the mayor and all the different direction and guidance we've been given over this two and a half year process. I'll be the first to admit, growing up in the in the home building, new construction, land development industry, we do not do a good job communicating as much as we should with the general public. I will, I will not state the commissioner that had made it very clear two and a half years ago that made this statement and it still resonates with me today, that this does not need to be an us versus them environment. This needs to be in an environment where we all work together and not to be theoretical. This is a perfect example. As a builder and developer, no one likes the rezoning word. You see the signs go up, Facebook gets lit up, phones start ringing. There's a lot of, there's a lot of tension, a lot of apprehension. And when you work together as I think we really did in this case, you get a result like Chris and Madison just explained. Yes, it took two and a half years. It's nice to be back in front of you again and and not have 37 Zoom calls and so forth. But it got us to this point. Not to be more repetitive than what Chris said, but we listened and that's the biggest thing. Folks on Washington Street and Providence Street and all the connecting street, they wanted a good quality product. And everybody has a different interpretation of that. We're a local home building company. Our office is six miles away from this office here. I live in Waxall. Most of my staff lives in Waxall. I have three other neighborhoods we'll be presenting to you in Waxall. A lot of folks talk about how much they love Waxall. I love it in every different aspect. I love working here. I love living here. I love raising my children here. And it's my reputation. If I come up here and do a really bad job on this, you're going to remember the next time I present to you. Okay, so we've taken the time to really solicit the feedback. What did we do? We met with the residents and just as a quick recap, we had three meetings under the tent. We had five visits for folks that were not able to join, other meetings onsite. Let's just walk and talk. Let's just, let's get it all out in the open. We had over a dozen Zoom calls. We had three meetings at our neighborhood model home at Grove Manor because I wanted folks to see our quality and how we conduct our business. And over 20-some phone calls and every person that I met with personally had my cellphone, Chris's cellphone, and other members of our team's cellphone and email addresses. Chris had mentioned all the things that were very important to the residents. And I believe we did everything we could to be in compliance with what they asked. The three stories that felt too much like an apartment, we dropped to a two-story. The biggest takeaway was quality product that blends in with the downtown Waxall architecture. We have an architect on staff and I said, I don't want you to design anything. I want you to get in a car and I want you to drive in downtown Waxall and I want you to walk the streets. And I want you to bring your camera and I want you to take pictures of all the corbels and the dental molding and the parapits. And I want you to come back and I want you to present a draft to us. We we received that draft. It was good. Wasn't great. We thought it was okay. Well, then we presented it to all the residents. And we asked them on a scale of one to 10 and the Zoom, the recorded Zoom coverage will speak exactly to this. On a scale of one to 10, what do you think? It's a five. Okay, well, five is average in my eyes in that regard. What can make it better? Well, we'd like to see bigger front porches. We'd like to see, you know, we'd like to see additional hardscape. We'd like to see more detail, et cetera. And we solicited the advice of other members of the town as well. Ironically, one of the things that I thought was going to be the the most exciting things was adding their same red brick color as most of the buildings in downtown Waxall currently have. And that was a mixed review. Some folks liked it. Some folks thought it was too stark with the other color schemes. And that's the reason why we came up with different color schemes. We're not married to either one. We think they both look good, but we made the commitment to the local residents that we present both options to them and we're okay as a builder doing either one. I think you've seen this one on a much smaller scale, a three unit. The question came up, well, you don't all have three units. You have five units and you have seven units. And what is that going to look like? So we took the largest, what I call strip set, and developed what all seven units would look like in one building. We did the same thing with the white brick as well. So you can kind of see the difference here. Whether it's white, whether it's red, I don't have a preference. But it was just listening to what their concerns were, what their objections were and knowing that we're okay either way. So going back to how I started this conversation, I think as an industry, there are a lot of builders and developers who do a pretty good job being very transparent throughout this entire process. I think there's others, and probably very early in my career, being naive, I was not as transparent as open as I should be. But that message, when one of the commissioners said, let's not make this an us versus them and let's work together as a town, as a developer, as a builder, and the local residents, it was the right move. And I think it's what's got us to where we're at today. So we appreciate your support. Hopefully you find this to be acceptable to the town. I believe the residents that we've been speaking with were very happy with all the improvements we've not only made to the site plan, but also to the architecture. And we're very proud to bring forth this because we know it's a high-profile location in downtown Waxall. And it should feel like downtown Waxall and not a completely separate neighborhood. Even to the point, as I mentioned to Commissioner Simpson, and maybe you mentioned it to me, is does it even have to have a community name? We want it to just be part of downtown Waxall. So we want it to be harmonious. We think we have hopefully achieved that. And we appreciate your support tonight. So thank you. I answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, comments? Anybody up looking back behind me? Commissioner Morrie, go ahead.
I understand that comments were made by the local residents. Did anyone comment about the traffic that would be modified?
Every, every rezoning, every subdivision approval that I've been part of, and it's probably been well over 8,000 lots that I've entitled in my life, yes, it comes up every single time. Traffic concerns, school impact concerns, et cetera. We have worked diligently with the residents and also with the Kimley Horn folks to address that. One of the biggest concerns is what Chris mentioned was the interconnectivity between our neighborhood and the Washington Street residents. It's just not, it's not a street where you want to be taking traffic through. And that was the purpose of not making that connection, a vehicular connection. That was the purpose of making an emergency rescue, pavers, a breakaway gate so that God forbid something happened on Washington Street. There was a house fire, EMS needed to get there. There was a tree falling. You couldn't access Washington Street. You could come through our neighborhood and go through that emergency access. So yes, traffic comes up in every, every rezoning, every subdivision approval that I've ever been part of. But I believe we've done a very good job hopefully addressing the local residents' concerns.
Very good. Thank you for that.
We're going to, we're going to wait for the. We're currently in discussions with staff in regards to looking at other alternative routes. But we're also going to follow exactly what comes back from the Kimley Horn study and make sure that we're in compliance with what's being requested as well.
When do we know, Mr. Commissioner Lassick, I'm sorry. When do we know when this report is going to come back?
I'll defer to someone smarter than myself that can answer that question.
So not smarter, but this is the area I had to study for.
Matt, could you, just to piggyback on that, could you maybe just explain the process of how that that works?
Absolutely. So the subdivision was not large enough. The plan is not large enough to trip our traffic impact analysis formally. They don't have enough units. But because it's adjacent to, you know, a failed facility, all this traffic is going to go out to Providence Road most likely. And so I did require a transportation tech memo, which is a step down from a full TIA. Normally, we like to do this process at this point and not a construction document approval. But because there were issues, one, with the sewer availability, that was a more pressing issue. And their timeline and getting approved compressed that. They went ahead and they paid for the counts and we got the counts before school finished. So we could do the report separate from that. And and we're waiting for the means to go ahead and have the study done. It changes nothing about the results of this study. It actually moves the risk from where they have an understanding of what the mitigation costs are going to be to the project before they proceed to construction drawings. It moves it to that point where they're going to go ahead and design this project and then get the study back and have to incorporate those costs into the project outright. And so, I mean, again, it really won't change what our expectations are. The report, when it's done, is done by a third party. They're not, it's arms-length from the developer and through the town. So it's still going to be consistent with with every other project we've done. And ultimately, the TIA doesn't require us to follow any particular process. It gives us the authority to not issue a certificate of occupancy. So they could go through all the motions of building it and not actually be able to sell a single lot if they don't follow through, one, the requirements of the of the tech memo.
How many units are required to do the full TIA?
So generally, it's not necessarily based on units. It's a peak hour, 100 peak hour trips, either AM or PM additional to the out of the site or 1,000 per day. Traditionally, to try and make it in the simplest terms, it's typically about 100 units of multiple bedrooms. But those, it's not an arithmetical equation. It's geometric. So you plug it into a computer, you tell them what the number of units is, how many bedrooms are in the unit, and then it spits out your trip gens. And that's what we use to to then route out of the site, apply it to the background traffic that's already on the road and decide are levels of service decreasing significantly where we have to go ahead and make some mitigation. Typically, it's turn lanes, could be traffic signal, things like that.
So would the report just basically have to do the coming in and out of the subdivision, not necessarily expanding out to Broom Street?
No, it will focus on Broom Street because we know that's where the the issues are going to occur. If there's not enough gaps during peak hour now and we're adding a set number of those percentage of trips from the site, what does that do? Does it, if it fails, then then we have to do something to improve that system.
So there is a chance that the report could say that there needs to be something done to Broom Street?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any thoughts, comments by anybody? Commissioner Simpson?
Just a question. So I know it's 63 units and three cottage homes. The, I think sometimes too, and we talked about this before, it's not like those will be online tomorrow. It's a process. So I would think, how long would you anticipate that it would take to start selling your first unit to when it would all be completed?
Yeah, and that, that's a part of the scoping analysis that has yet to be done. But typically, they tell us when do they think the final build out is going to be from when they're going to start. We apply those numbers to growing the the existing traffic through those years. And then ultimately, if there are other projects like the widening, if that has something to do at that horizon year, they actually model for that as well. But the widening is not coming that far south, so I don't think it's going to be of any benefit in these circumstances. It's really just how can we take the traffic that's already on Broom and then we're seeing probably at Blithe, Price, or McDonald, these trips coming onto it? And what are they going to do in those scenarios?
Any, any thought, Brian, about how, you know, projections of when like the first unit could possibly be sold? Or any timeline?
From a, from a time, I'll start with the second question first because I'm a little with the sewer situation right now. It could really change our timeframe. But from the time that we are onsite and actually starting with a total of 63 total homes here, I would anticipate that's an 18-month, give or take, selling. And you have to build them. So I think we're in that 18- to 24-month period of time. Working through comments or Union County Public Works right now, waiting on additional comments for road improvements, et cetera. I would be, and I'm purely speculating here because of things that we're still waiting on timeframes for. If we're able, if we're able to start selling in 12 months, I think that'd probably be a pretty good goal. I hope it's sooner than that, but just based off all the approvals and permits and other things that come out of left field and the current constraints with the sewer right now and how backed up certain agencies are, I think if we're, if we're out there marketing and selling in a year, I think that is realistic.
So it would be at least a year before you'd be selling and then probably build out another 24 months or two years after that?
I'd say that's accurate, yes.
So probably a year to three years down the road, that would still give us time to mitigate any traffic versus based on what the traffic analysis study comes back at right now?
I think that's a pretty fair range, knowing what we know today. Now, if for some reason, if utility plans are no more sewer for foreseeable future, then it's going to just push that timeframe. But to get through the rest of our construction drawings and all of our permits, that's, I would, Chris maybe thinks differently, but I think it's at least a six-month process. Develop the site. Could be a six-month process. There's 12 months right there. And then the selling cycle of, you know, 18 months, build them within that 18- to 24-month period of time.
So Matt, I just want to be clear. So based on the transportation memo, that information will come back and then they will have to incorporate the recommendations in their construction documents?
Yes, their plans will have to include the off-site improvements. If it involves a DOT facility, then they'll have to get approved by DOT. And and again, the first certificate, it could be tied to the first or any specific certificate of occupancy that the trips. The mitigation would not be approved until those improvements are accepted.
Okay, so the study is going to come back with mitigation strategies. And if they don't comply with that, then we can't issue them a certificate of occupancy so anyone could not move into that unit or any part of that development unless they do are compliant with what that recommendation is. That's correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other thoughts, comments?
Were there any, were there any public comments for this one? Can I enter if you?
You may. Commissioner Hall?
Thanks, everybody. Commissioner Hall. This, I recall this project because it was part of the rezoning of this project came up right before I was appointed. And I guess you could say it was somewhat of a hot potato back then. There were a lot of folks who were quite concerned and rightly so. Growth is a scary word for a lot of folks around here. And quite frankly, I think a lot of folks didn't know who you were or who your company, who your company was then. But since that time, what I think this board has seen and what we've, we've seen you do in working with the residents in that town, excuse me, in that neighborhood, has been remarkable. One of the first things I did is I actually drove down there and I walked the neighborhood. I walked Miller Street. I've talked with a few of the residents over there and just familiarized myself with with the project. And seeing how you've worked with them and how it's adopted to accommodate the residents has been, has been really remarkable. And I think what I see in my head is I, what I worry about is what happens if it isn't someone like you? What happens if somebody comes in and they do build three-story places, which they're allowed to do? What happens if somebody comes in and they do clear-cut the property, which they're allowed to do? And so quite frankly, And so, quite frankly, I, I, I think, um, uh, voting against this would be voting against the future, uh, of the town. And so, uh, thank you for reaching out, uh, to the residents, and, uh, I greatly appreciate, uh, what this is potentially going to really do for the town.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I'm looking through the two blank seats. I'm going to have to look behind me here. Any other comments from Commissioner Westlick or Commissioner Morey?
Case.
Well, I, I mean, I just, I want to bring it to, I mean, I do appreciate the, the effort made by the builder. I mean, I mean, if it had been a different developer coming in there, they could have squeezed some more units in there and made parking along that, uh, the entrance there off of, uh, North Providence, cut down more trees. I agree with all of that. So, I really do appreciate the effort made there. I mean, I am still, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm struggling over, uh, the traffic right now because that is the most congested section of road in Waxaw. And we're talking about adding, uh, with the two cars per unit, you know, around a hundred, a hundred and twenty additional cars there. And it's hard for me without knowing what this traffic study's coming back saying. It's hard for me to envision what's going to happen here. So, um, let's, let's come down on that right now, but, um, we're about to hear some other thoughts.
I'm going to defer to our town attorney for a moment. They'd like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Town Attorney Charles Buckley. What, um, I want to do is inform the public what the role of the board is in, in these administrative decisions. A couple of times, uh, Madison would point out, this is an administrative decision. Why is that important? What's important here is that normally a, a board makes legislative decisions, which gives complete discretion to the board, how they want to vote, one way or the other, on legislative decisions. That's their role. That's what they're elected to do. Administrative decisions, if a particular administrative item comes before the board, and in this case, a subdivision preliminary plat, statute requires that it be approved by the board, and the final plat would be approved by the board. But that's a statutory requirement, but it's still administrative. The board must make its decision on whether or not this particular subdivision plat conforms to the ordinance. In this case, it's the old UDO. The, the developer, because it'll, it changed during the process, he gets to select which the old or the new that he wants to use. That's within his right. But the administrative decision here is, does it conform? Well, how does this board know whether or not, from a technical standpoint, that this plat will be, uh, within the guidelines and comply with the old UDO? It's done so by a PE signing off on the plat, a preliminary, uh, excuse me, a professional engineer signs off on the plat, that this conforms to the UDO. So, that's where this board gets its, uh, fact on whether or not this complies. If it complies, then they have to approve it. They have no discretion. It's not legislative. It's a subdivision administrative. So, if this is in compliance with the ordinance, then they must approve this, this plat. So, that's what their role is here. So, that, so you understand, this is not zoning. Zoning is a legislative decision. This is strictly a compliance with the subdivision ordinance. Does this plat comply with the ordinance or not? And so, a PE signs off on it. It is the town's PE. It's the town's engineer. It's not the engineer of the applicant. So, then there is conformity to the ordinance. It must be approved. So that the public understands that this body has a limited function here. It's important in that the statute says they must approve it, and that's what comes forth. So, I just wanted everybody to understand what's going on here. And we haven't met in a year and a half, and we tend to get away from things, what, what goes on and what role the board has. So, I want the public to be aware that the board's role is strictly administrative, very little, if any, discretion to approve or not approve. If a PE signs off on it, then it conforms to the ordinance, and that's what they're looking at.
Question. With that conformity, does that include us, um, considering any type of traffic? Or does that just include us considering that the PE has signed off on this particular project as?
The ordinance doesn't generate the study. There is a secondary one that, that Matt mentioned. So, they're using that in order to come up with what traffic mitigation would be required. And as he said, it doesn't come back before the board, but it comes up whether or not they, the contract will be approved or not.
In moving forward.
In moving forward.
But not in our decision as of right now?
That's correct. That's exactly right. Right now is?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Westlick. Um, Charles, does that mean that, so if a motion is made, can we add into that motion that it must adhere to the traffic study?
Well, that's, that's innate in the process. That's the, uh, part of the ordinance, but that's not for decision tonight. You can't add conditions to this.
So, that will then come, if that comes up at a later date with the town engineer, and there is a question or a problem with the traffic or the analysis or the study, then that's something that is to be considered at that time?
That's correct.
And before, um, the applicant can move forward in the process of building or opening, but that is not before us tonight?
That's correct. And that's a pretty strong, um, hold on the developer here because if he can't move forward, get his CO, which that would be the engineer's decision. If he can't move forward, then he's made a substantial investment for nothing. So, uh, that's a handy tool that, that this, uh, the town and this board has available, and that is the final approvals by the engineer here on the traffic mitigations. And those are going to be by regulations. It's going to be by our, uh, UDO regulations, and it's going to be by the, uh, NCDOT regulations. But all of those are technical requirements. Then engineers are the ones who will be making those decisions.
And those technical requirements are binding on the applicant in the process?
That's correct.
And the TIA ordinance, I believe, was adopted in twenty-seventeen, so it was not that long ago. I'll say unfortunately, but fortunately, it is now. And it's a great tool that we have and utilize. And of course, as, as, uh, staff has provided the presentation and, and just as a further clarification, uh, you know, as far as compliance with the subdivision standards as determined by our zoning and subdivision administrator as well.
And you remember what a subdivision plat is. It's just not, it's just a document that is recorded in the Register of Needs. It sets out how that subdivision, but it's not the zoning of it. But this sets out the lot and block and the public infrastructure and these, these, what will be dedicated and what won't be dedicated. It, it's just a, a formalized land plan on a plat that's recorded. That's all it is.
All right, any further questions there? Further questions? Commissioner Morey?
My question is, uh, the traffic mitigation, uh, by a memo, how far is that to the signature? Does he have to weigh that in advance or?
No. That, that is something that will be triggered later on in the process. That has nothing to do with the evening's, uh, request or the, or the PE's signature on the plat.
Okay, because it just seems that it would seem like something to take into account before, as you said, the investment of time and money into something that we cannot be able to do anything about, what a TIA might?
Well, excuse me for, I didn't mean to interrupt, but what, what this is, is that is something that will occur when all of the traffic mitigation is surfaced. We have no idea at this point where the traffic mitigation will be until, until the, all the final, uh, well, I don't know what, what's that, well, the final analysis. Uh, thank you for that word. But that's, that only will come up when they go on through that process. But that's a separate process, and that's in the future. That's not tonight.
So, will the PE be signing off on the combat's guide?
That's, well, basically, yes. What, and he'll be also authorizing whether or not the, the, he can, uh, the developer can move forward with, um, uh, his project or not.
So, the, the town engineer verifies the, the report, obviously, uh, once it's provided. And, uh, and Matt can certainly, if I say anything out of turn, can correct me here, but it's revealed. You know, once, once their, um, uh, preliminary plat is approved, then after they get through the construction document phase, which it probably is a correct estimate of roughly six months, if they're timely in their submittals. A typical technical review process would be two or three cycles. Most of the time, it takes two or three cycles. Uh, rarely will it be done in one cycle, but it's not unheard of that it can be approved through one. Our current record right now, I think, is twelve review cycles over, um, three or four years. So, we hope we won't be there, but, uh, we do have those from time, uh, to time. And so, you, you go through the process over and over again until it, it, it's right. And so, until it meets all of the standards that it is required to, uh, to meet. And I, I do think, uh, uh, most developers understand that, but obviously, not, not all, but I think this one does.
Very good. Any other additional comments? All right, saying none. I'm going to move this forward, and I'm looking for a motion on the project. By right, uh, preliminary subdivision plan by the applicant, Broad Street Homes.
I'll make a motion to approve petition SUB dash zero one one nine six five dash two zero two one as presented.
Motion is up for the approval. All right, we'll go with, uh, Commissioner Morey.
Commissioner Morey, aye.
Commissioner Westlick?
Commissioner Westlick, aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Mayor Prettem.
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Very good. All right, motion has passed. Four to one. Thank you, gentlemen, for the work, the presentation, the effort. That project, uh, the bulk of it was, uh, approved by, uh, prior administrations in twenty-twelve. I think by Zone, basically, way back when. It's been a long time coming. Another one we'd like to, you know, see you guys work through, and we're certainly appreciative that, uh, we're able to, on this one, kind of a cleanup act on it. Looking forward to the project to come forward.
It's an example of the teamwork with everybody in this room, so thank you for all your, all your input and, and your help as well. Big team effort, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to, uh, the town leadership reports. Town manager Jeffrey Wells, birthday boy. Should we embarrass you?
Yeah, just two days ago. But, uh, thank you, Mayor. Have, have several things, uh, tonight, several bullet points. We do anticipate, uh, we understand that we will receive the updated census numbers mid-August. We understand that they will release those numbers on August eleventh and then have a second release on August sixteenth. So, we will see what our new population number is roughly in a couple of weeks. So, we're excited to see, uh, what that will be. As of yesterday, we've had eight thousand one hundred and sixty-one visitors to our website since our relaunch. So, we're very proud of that and have gotten a lot of good feedback on that site. So, that has gone very, very well so far. We are actively accepting applications for Waxaw one oh one. We are accepting those through mid-August. Waxaw one oh one is an interactive program that is designed to educate our residents about our local government. We talk about town processes, town policies, town services. It's a, a, a pretty, uh, good commitment. Nine weeks. Uh, it's on Wednesday nights, roughly two hours. But if you're interested in how your town operates, we would strongly encourage you to do that. It would be, I think, very enlightening for any citizen. And, uh, we have all of our department heads that participate in that weekly as well. We talk about how each department operates. We talk about how our budget is constructed, our annual process to that. Also, how the town is obligated to operate under North Carolina state law, and also the partnerships that we work with, uh, our peer organizations on a daily basis. So, uh, certainly encourage anybody out there who is, uh, thinking about or has interest in how your town operates to, uh, apply. And we, I think, we're starting on September first, if I remember correctly. So, that's coming up very soon. Next, I have something that I want to read. Um, it's, it, it is short, but it's three short paragraphs. And this comes from the League, the North Carolina League of Municipalities Bulletin. And this was, uh, released just this past Friday. It's titled, "Department of Transportation Work Group Approved Projects Lack Funding." So, the North Carolina Department of Transportation Prioritization Work Group met this week to consider plans for the next round of transportation project scores. The work group represents a stakeholder process that makes regular refinements to the data-driven strategic mobility formula that helps guide the prioritization of new transportation projects, a process outlined in the state's nationally-recognized Strategic Transportation Investments Law. The work group, with robust local government representation, including both the League and the North Carolina Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition, received a sobering update from the North Carolina Department of Transportation staff on the overall status of existing projects already in the approved pipeline. Simply put, the current STI program for such projects lacks funding. Transportation appropriations and the revenues that support those state and federal appropriations have fallen far short of what is needed. Add to that outdated and poorly-developed project estimates, ballooning construction costs, and fast-growing costs of needed right-of-way. We now know that the current STIP, as it's called, State Transportation Improvement Plan, is overprogrammed by approximately five billion, billion with a B, for committed projects between twenty-twenty-four and twenty-thirty-three. Given the lack of funding and rising costs, the stakeholder group agreed that moving forward with a new round of project scoring would be ill-advised. The work group's recommendations will be presented to the North Carolina Board of Transportation in August, and is expected to concur with the work group. Contact your metropolitan or rural planning organizations for details on how this might affect projects in your community. Bottom line, and as many of our members can say from experience, we need more funding from a modernized and forward-looking federal and state transportation financing system, which has been stagnant for decades if we are to meet the future transportation needs of our communities, economy, and environment. Thought that was very important to read. And really, the point here is, is as we've talked about here, uh, quite a bit in recent months, is that we're, we're going to be more on our own than we are going to get the, uh, the help from the NCDOT. Not because they necessarily don't want to, but because they're, they're going to have trouble funding, uh, all the projects that are needed. And not just in this area, but, uh, throughout the state. So, that's just something that, you know, we have to be mindful of moving forward, that, uh, some of these projects, I think particularly the ones with the highest price tags, may very well not, not get done in the timeframe that, uh, we would like. Projects keep getting pushed back and back and back. But the, uh, demands and interest in the community continues to grow and grow and grow. We certainly have the TIA ordinance in place now, which, which helps, uh, that greatly. But, uh, we just need to be prepared for, uh, what might be to come with the NCDOT, uh, moving forward. Buy your gas in North Carolina, not South Carolina.
Pays for some of those roadway improvements.
Yes. Um, last but not least, uh, so this is our first live meeting back. Um, I guess it turned into a hybrid live and, uh, virtual meeting, but, uh, so we've, we were doing, uh, virtual meetings for, uh, about a year and a half. And, uh, a- as we worked through a, a small IT issue, uh, earlier this evening, I just want to say how proud I am of our IT staff and then our clerk staff. And just, we ran, I, I just really can say how great of a, of a virtual meeting, uh, process, I guess you'd say. The, the meetings that we ran, uh, just were outstanding. Um, I think we were second to none to anybody out there. And, uh, that was because of, of the great folks in our IT and our clerks, just, uh, keeping this thing humming through it all. We obviously will still have the ability to, uh, conduct, uh, virtually. We obviously will still have the ability to conduct virtually when we need to, if a board member does need to do that moving forward, but I guess unless something changes in the state, we will be in this room now moving forward, but I just wanted to make sure that our IT staff and our clerk staff got some recognition for making us all look good and function very well in the last year and a half. So, thank you very much.
That's quite the delivery.
Yes, that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. It's hard not to echo some of those statements that the town manager has read. We have taken initiative amongst ourselves here. Jeff and I have lots of conversations about the realities of what's happening around us, and we have to make sure that we can leverage the best we can and get a collaborative and cooperative effort on anything that may or may not come to us, because I don't think we're gonna have the luxury of our good friends at DOT helping us anytime soon. So, you know, that's quite a five-billion-dollar statement there, but real is real. There's inflated costs on everything these days, so we're all experiencing that every turn. I wanted to say something about the Waxall 101 while we're still on that. There are some openings out there. We're gonna open it up to almost unlimited, if we could, with seating capacity, but...
That's correct.
I'd like to encourage all of the residents who have not been through that program before, we'd like them to sign up. No pressure, but I have a ten-year-old that signed up to attend the entire course. So no pressure on anybody out there, but a ten-year-old. So, anyway, wanted to piggyback off of that. I'm gonna jump over to Ms. Dina right now, if you'd come up, and she's our Parks and Recreation Director, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna go over all Parks and Rec activities coming up for the next couple weeks. Oops, there we go. As you, let me go back. There we go. It is Park and Rec Month, a National Park and Rec Month, and I wanted to show off the Park and Rec team, so very blessed to have all these wonderful individuals a part of the team, and we're gonna actually be able to add one more park staff coming up, so I'm excited about that as well. But how you get involved is our program guide, and rec desk is how you register for our events and programs. Upcoming and ongoing are our fitness classes with our walking group on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Please join Ms. Justine Walk in our Downtown. Also, senior program is back. We're doing senior game days, and also bringing back our classes as well, starting in August. So super excited to have them back, and they are already planning new games for us to play each time, too. Charcuterie class is actually August the 19th. Sorry about the wrong date on that, but we have registration starting now, and our Little Chef's classing class is starting up in next month as well. So this is an awesome way to get some cooking skills, and we're using our wonderful McDonald House for those classes. There we go. Our Hero Project, tomorrow, we're at a new site. Grace Presbyterian Church is letting us use their site. It's off of Waxall Marvin, so it's gonna be a great walking opportunity for our neighbors on that side of town. So it's underwater voyage, so they are making masks and puzzles tomorrow and doing some play activities, so please join us tomorrow at 9:30. And to register, please go to our rec desk to register to join us there. And next week is the very exciting Pirates and Fairies at Town Creek Park, and again, love to see you there and register on our rec desk. The Hero Project also, this is the rest of the summer, and it's gonna not, and please join us, and it's one of those things, we're going all the way until school starts back, and then having a couple more days for our preschool area in September. So again, wonderful program, please join us. We will start back in the afternoons, too, for after-school, when school starts in. Upcoming events, mark your calendar for the whole year, so I've got you all the way to June. So please come and join us for these wonderful programs and activities, and this awesome community building when we do events. This Friday night is Jammin' By The Tracks. Please come and join us at the Community Corner, and no registration is needed. Just come and have some good times with us at 7:00 PM. We have food trucks available. We also have our wonderful downtown restaurants to enjoy as well. Back to School Bash is coming up soon, and our next Jammin' By The Tracks, so it won't be, hopefully not too spooky, Friday the 13th for Jammin' By The Tracks, but we'll have fun regardless. And then the next day, we're having our Back to School Bash that we partner up with PD and some community partners, and to register for Back to School, please go to the Sign Up Genius. Park construction, we're getting down to the home stretch. So I went on a field trip yesterday, walking and identifying some trees to make sure that we work around, so we're super excited about that next stage in the development, and we've got our gold shovels ready, so we're getting ready. So more to come, but it is getting down to the nitty-gritty now, so we're excited. We're always looking for volunteers, so we have a couple more adopted space locations. Please join us for these wonderful locations of giving back to your community. So Barnes Park is still available, Nesbit Park, and some of the Red Trail is still available. Partnerships. So Ms. Justine is looking for awesome instructors for the fall program guide. This is your chance to come show us your talents and your gifts, so if you would like to be a partner with us this coming-up program guide, this is your chance. So please contact the office, and we would love to have you. And as always, I leave you with our vision and mission for Park and Recreation, and if you have any questions, I'm here to help with those.
All right. We can't see you, but do I hear a voice?
I don't know how to get it off of this. There we go. Thank you. Dina, what is the status of the grant application for the Downtown Park? Has that been submitted? Yes, ma'am. It's already been submitted, and we're supposed to hear back, hopefully in September, but I know that the budget's in the General Assembly for North Carolina, so we're waiting on that.
Any other comments and questions for Ms. Dina? Dina, I gotta share with you that we've been getting just very, very positive input from all the events that you've been doing. I think we had record crowds at the corner for the last Jammin'. We even had a personal happy birthday song led by an unmentioned commissioner, but it was a great event. I'm hearing good comments all the way around. I know people are wanting to get outside, but you've done a great job of reassembling, keeping the team together, building your own team, your work team, and they've all been getting just rave reviews from everybody. So congratulations.
Very much appreciated. Thank you very much, and thank you for the support.
All right, very good. All right, thank you very much. All right, I think, Matt, do we still have you up here? You have a presentation? You met your quota for words tonight? Lucky us. All right, so nothing there. Any comments from the commissioners around generally? Okay, I have to look behind me. We have nothing tonight on the closed session, so I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn. Don't everybody rush up.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is up. We're gonna have to do roll call again. So Commissioner Simpson?
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Commissioner Westlake?
Commissioner Westlake, aye.
Commissioner Morey?
Commissioner Morey, aye.
Mayor Prettem?
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Commissioner Hall, aye.
We're good. We're adjourned.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, everybody, for being brave to show up, and even though we had a record meeting last time, we had a longer one this time.